Order, the March 13th meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with me for our prayer and our pledge. Bow with me, please. Our Father in Heaven, Lord, thank you for this day and the blessings that we've received this day. Be with those in our community who are suffering and in need. Minister to their needs. Be with the leaders of this community as we make decisions, hopefully that are in the best interest of all the citizens combined. We ask that you especially be with those who are ill and need help, and we ask that you minister to those families. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Gal, would you call a row, please?
Connaught Allen.
Here.
Jim A.
Here.
Juan Cannon.
Here.
Will Burn.
Here.
Mike Bush.
President.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Mike Bott.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have four.
Thank you, Gal. Code Department, David here.
Yes, sir.
I report.
I believe the report was passed. Mr. Jones is not present, but the report was passed out for everyone.
Do you have a copy of the report on your desk? Okay. Take a second to look at that and any comments you might have. Item number five on the agenda, items withdrawn or deferred. Doug?
Yes, sir. There was one item that was withdrawn. We did publish an amended agenda, which is why you don't see it on here, but the Brenda Benz, John Engelson application along Epsom Road and Manchester Highway, that was withdrawn from the agenda. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Doug. Item six, submitted for plat approval, item A, Peachtree subdivisions, lot one, item number 13-2007, minor final plat, one lot on 2.136 acres, Zone CS, located along Las Casas Pike, Peachtree Incorporated developer. This plat approval request also includes a waiver request for a lot with no soil sites. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you one question. On that withdrawal right there?
Yes, sir.
I've had a few phone calls on that. Do we know when it's maybe coming back in front of us?
There's no date scheduled at this point, Mr. Sandlin. The impression I got from the applicant's design engineer was that they were just going to hold off for a while. Of course, whenever it does come back, we'll do our notice protocols as far as mailouts and signs on the property and all that, but they've given me no indication at this point when this might come back up.
Okay. I think it'd be helpful to the public, too, to know we don't know neither when it's coming back, so, thank you.
Yeah, I don't foresee it coming back anytime in the near future. I'll say that much. Oh, thank you. And back to the issue of the Peachtree plat. This item was discussed at length at the county commission meeting last month, I believe it was February the 14th. This is the site of the existing convenience center out in the Las Casas community. Ultimately, the county commission did vote to purchase two acres of property where the convenience center currently sits, and this plat basically creates that two acres of land. The biggest reason you're seeing this tonight is the fact that this lot is being created without any soil site. The soil site for the property is a little further in with the remainder of the property. Really, the use for the property as it's currently being utilized, there's really no reason to have a soil site out there, but that's the reason this plat is coming before you tonight, is just for the waiver request and the approval of the plat. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Steve?
I'm just saying, why are we seeing this? I mean, it's been there for how many years, you know, 20 or so?
Right. Well, they're creating a new lot, and when you create a new lot, it does have to conform to the subdivision regulations, and that's similar to a lot of the waivers we see where there's an existing use of property, a house, something to that effect, and they're creating a new lot. You know, as an example, maybe there needs a fire hydrant waiver. It hasn't had a fire hydrant within 1,000 feet since it was created, but since you make a new lot, it has to abide by those regulations. That's basically the same situation here, just with the soils. Incidentally, there is a fire hydrant pretty much right in front of the property, so that's not an issue here.
Motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second. Mike?
Jeff, make a note that I didn't participate in the discussion, nor will I vote.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6B, the Villas at Twin Oaks. RCK Joint Ventures, River Road Construction Incorporated, Creative Homes LLC, and Keystone Homes of Tennessee Incorporated versus Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. Item 07-77, preliminary plat, 75 lots on 33.6 acres, Zoned RM, located along Twin Oaks Drive, RCK Joint Ventures developer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Twin Oaks Drive, across from the Garrison Coast subdivision. This plat was originally considered by the planning commission back in 2007. That's been the subject of litigation over the last few years. With that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Josh McCrory, our county attorney.
All right. Remember, at the February 25 meeting, we had a good bit of discussion about this case and the court's opinion that reversed the denial of this plat in 2007. At that time, on February 25th, you made the decision not to appeal the court's opinion with respect to that issue anyway, which brings then this plat back in front of you tonight. By way of reminder, the court's opinion of December 31 read, and I'm quoting here, "Thus we find that the issue should be remanded to the defendants with directions to enter a determination that the plaintiff's plan is approved at this stage of the process." Since that determination was not appealed, that is your directive from the court, to enter a determination that the plaintiff's plan is approved at this stage of the process. And so that's what you're called upon to do tonight, I think.
Well, are these folks still together? Are they making the application, or is this just come from the courts that were to look at it?
Directive from the court at this point. So you're only complying with the court's order.
So these folks are still together? They're still wanting to develop, and they're making this application?
I can tell you what I was told by their attorney, and the answer to that is yes.
Are they here to answer any questions that we may have? They are, or they're not here?
I don't know, Steve. This is not scheduled for a public hearing. It's just a plat approval.
My question, approve?
I have a motion to approve and a second. Now we're open for further discussion.
I take it that if they cannot meet any of their requirements that were based on before, or as far as that lot, they were going to pull their super through, then this would just be another void if they cannot meet their obligation. Is that correct? But that's, that involves back in their part, in the court at that point, I guess.
This was a preliminary plat at the time, and it did have certain requirements to fulfill the super. They would still have to be able to accomplish in order to comply with this plat that you're approving.
And they'll have to come in and apply for a final plat approval, I take it, at that point in time.
That's right.
Further discussion?
Dale, we had, and I know that the courts were kind of being forced into this, but the water situation here, the drainage and whatever, there were some major issues here while we denied it. We just didn't deny it because we didn't want it. We denied it on reasons. So where are we with those issues?
Well, my understanding is the court order was for us to approve as applied at the time, the regulations when they applied, even though there were some questions on the water levels, they met our requirements at the time, and so this plat, based on that date, meets our requirements.
I just, I understand we're being forced on this deal. I totally understand that. It doesn't make me feel good about it. Don't make me feel good if this subdivision goes in and there's issues where they ultimately going to come back to. You know, they're going to come back to planning commission, and then what's the judge going to say about that? So, under the regulations now, would they comply?
There are changes to the regulations that they would have to do, but again...
They would have to meet those through the state as far as what we're enforcing, the state regulations on the drainage and containment and all that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Any opposition?
No.
The motion carries. Thank you. Item 6, zoning request and public hearings. Item 6A, John L. Beatty. Item 13-8003, rezoning, location 5104 Baker Road. Commissioner Steve Sandlin. The size of the site is approximately 409 acres, tax map 71, parcel 30. Existing zoning is medium density residential. Proposed zoning is agricultural residential.
Thank you, Chairman Lynch. Yes, this application is located on Baker Road, and as you mentioned, it's approximately 409 acres in size. The applicant wishes to continue to farm his property, so there will be no real change to the use that's already on it. He wants to just request the agricultural zone so that he can have a farm stand by right on the property where he can sell some produce, which he does already, but he'd like to continue to do that and add a small cabin where he can sell from. So, the comprehensive plan does show this as being in the urban character area. However, farms are cultural resource, and we should attempt to preserve them whenever we're given the opportunity, so it would be in favor of this application. And I'll just give you a quick view of the property. And that's sort of the area where people come now to buy the produce, and as I said, they are going to place a small cabin structure in this area so that there'll be more of a designated farm stand in the future. The applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Any questions of staff? No questions, I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to make a comment, please come forward and state your name.
I'm Crystal Mallory, and I live at 3412 Laurel Mountain Road in Blackman. My backyard adjoins with the farm of John L. Beatty, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of Mr. Beatty's request to rezone his property. Statistics tell us that 91% of America's fruit and 78% of our vegetables are grown near metro regions where they are in the path of development, and America has been losing more than an acre of farmland every minute. Also, the local food movement, which involves growing, selling, buying, and eating fresh local produce and meat, has gained support over the last few years, and this has been driven by people who seek to bolster local farmers and live healthfully and seasonally. Because I feel strongly that we need to properly zone farmland in order to protect it and the people who earn their living with it, I believe the local food movement, and because I believe the local food movement promotes a strong sense of community, I urge you to vote in support of Mr. Beatty's request. The land he works has been farmland for much longer than the 20-plus years I've lived in Blackman, and to properly zone it at this time, I think, is most appropriate.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I am Ida Phillips Thomas. I live at 106 Crockett Court, Smyrna. My family and I own the property at 5820 Baker Road. We also own the adjoining property to the 5820 Baker Road property. My question is, how will this rezoning affect the use of our property and also the value of our property? That's my question. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The applicant had a few photos that he wanted to show.
Beatty's coming up. Is there a way to answer the last question that was raised about affecting surrounding properties and zonings of that?
I can give it a try, Mr. Chairman. As far as the use of the property, now, without having exactly known which one property she's talking about, but in this case, I don't think it matters necessarily. As far as the use of the property, as far as what it's permitted for use now, that's not being proposed to change on the speaker's property. This zoning is really affecting Mr. Beatty's property, so whatever her property is owned, which I'm guessing is RM out in this area, they'd be able to continue to use the land in that manner. Now, as far as the value of the property, now, I'm not an appraiser of property, so I'm not really qualified to speak as to whether it's going to change as far as the value of the property is concerned. I will say, though, that the activity on the property under question tonight is not changing, so I really wouldn't see that there'd be much of an impact on their property as well.
Doug, on another issue there, or another point, I was just going to say that it's going to continue what it's been and what Mr. Beatty's been doing for years and years and years, and I'm sure he's getting ready to satisfy you on that as well, as being farm and farming, just being able to sell his produce and his, you know, sausage and stuff that he raises there is what he's wanting to do, and then really, it's kind of protecting you in a way from it's being residential where it could be purchased as a subdivision and then developed, or whatever, or him developing it as a subdivision. Now, he'd have to go back through the rezoning to change it back, so it could do that. Right now, it'd just be strictly agriculture and farming for what he's been doing for years and years.
Just to clarify one point, while I think you're correct, Mr. Sandlin, what you're saying, I will say that residential uses are allowed in the AR zone, which is what they're asking for, but there is a five-acre minimum, so it's not like you, as you were saying, it's not like you would see just a huge subdivision, they'd be acreage tracts really at that point, just to clarify.
Thank you. I'm John L. Beatty, 5104 Baker Road. This farm's been our family fold for 200 years. In 1984, the planning commission changed all that and made everything in the county R-15. With the new comprehensive plan and the rezoning that just went into effect 1st of January, has put an ag zone back in there, and this has been the only county in the state without an ag zone. So we're just requesting to go back to agriculture as to what we are doing now. Things in 200 years and farming and all have changed. Farm back then, Rutherford County was the largest cotton-producing county in the state of Tennessee at that time. This farm even had a cotton gin on it. Most of it was cotton. All of it was horses' mews. It was after World War II that the first tractor came, but it's been continued to farm in 200 years. One of the things I've done all my life is put hay in this old building there. It was a cabin on the place, and if you're going to advertise, you're 207, six years old, you need to look the image. We're going to take that building, we've already got it numbered and taken down, and we're going to move it. And that's been on the farm all my life. And then there's another building, that's another end of it, and we found out we hadn't had hay in it all that time, it still wouldn't have been that good a shape. Kept the roof on it, kept the rain out of it, and hay was still in there. We've got another one building there that was on my great-great-granddaddy, Thomas Jefferson Beatty's. Another picture there of this one. Well, I guess you'd already seen them. Anyway, a tornado hit it and blew it away a year ago, the roof of it. It was a smokehouse of his, and we're taking two of those buildings and putting them right out in the front of the last building where the new barn is. That's where we had a fire last summer, and that's the new structure. Right in front of that's where we're going to relocate these buildings. Changing in agriculture's changed. We started a year ago going directly to the consumer with pork. We raise hogs, so we're having them processed, taking them straight to the market. We did the main street up here last summer, the first time that I'd been on the square selling goods. That was a different change, and we got a lot of demand for our product, so after, right before Christmas, we opened up in the new shop, and last month, sitting there, we thought it was a great place to relocate these buildings and to preserve them. So we'll be doing the same thing we've been doing. We'll just be zoned. What we're doing is agriculture.
Now, if I've got any questions?
Mr. Beatty, so you just want to be zoned to do what you've been doing for 200 years? What I've been doing. Right.
One else wish to speak? At this point, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and commissioners, we're open for business.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve with conditions planning set forth.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to reiterate that if anything, this is a downzoning. There would be more security for the neighborhood and stuff there, because if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Thomas was my first grade teacher at Mitchell Nelson. Did you not used to teach over there? You were Ms. Phillips then. That was a few days ago, but I want to make sure I support my first grade teacher right here.
Thank you for getting us off target there, Will. We appreciate that. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposition? And motion carries. Thank you. This will also be on the Rutherford County Commission's agenda on Thursday, April 11th at 6:00 PM. Anyone that wishes to attend, that will also be a public hearing, as I said. Item 6B, Brandon Witt, item 13-8004, rezoning, location 3108 Medical Center Parkway, Commissioner Trey Gooch. Size of the lot is approximately 238 acres, tax map 79 parcels, 51 and 62. Existing zoning is medium density residential. Proposed zoning is agricultural residential. Elizabeth?
This is very similar to the last request that you just saw. It is 238 acres. There is quite a bit of city around this property, but this is still in the county. The applicant wants to continue to farm the tracts. In addition, he'd like to open a Upek strawberry field this spring. He's been working with staff and city planning staff to figure out the best way to access the property, and we've determined that we believe the entrance and exits will be on Wilkes and Pike, just for vehicular safety. But that's his plan for the property, is to continue to farm it. It, once again, is in the urban character area, but it is farm, and we would recommend, given the opportunity, to preserve it. Just a quick look, this is actually, this is the strawberry patch that's been out there, and you can see the new Chamber of Commerce building and the Embassy Suites. And of course, it's right next to I-24. And the applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Elizabeth, I just have one question. There's a statement under the proposal details that wasn't included in the last one. It's under site design, and it says outside events must be concluded by no later than 10:00 PM.
Correct.
Are we expecting outside events?
I was referring to the strawberry patch. It will be, people will come to the site, and speaking with the applicant, I believe there'll be some morning hours, people can come pick their strawberries, and then they'll probably shut down for the mid-afternoon, and then maybe in the evening from like 3:00 to 5:00. There'll be no way to be even close to 10:00 PM, people picking strawberries.
Other questions? At this time, we'll declare a public hearing open on the rezoning request by Brandon Witt, item 13-8004. Mr. Witt, would you like to make a comment?
I'm Brandon Witt. I actually farm this tract of land that's owned by the Williamson family, Mitsu and sons and daughters, Mark and Tony Williamson, and I am here on their behalf, representing their property that they graciously rent to me and trust me with what we're doing on the land with John L. and myself. This all kind of started with a tremendous drought last year, and you sit back on the farm, and you think about some changes that maybe you need to make, or things that could be a little more profitable than some of the things that you're doing now, and I came up with the idea to put a strawberry patch in. So that's kind of what you can see here. This was actually us last fall, when we started setting the plants there in the fall, and it was one thing that Ms. Williamson always wanted to do on the farm was to raise strawberries, and her husband Bascom always said that he would have no part of strawberries there on the farm, so this is kind of moving on something that she always kind of wanted to see done, and wanted to see that through and have an opportunity to do that, and also to, just to be able to continue to tell our story of what agriculture is and how vital agriculture is to this county and this city, and what a great thing it can add, even though it's across from a major shopping center and retail space and restaurants and so forth, but it's a great diversification here, I think, that we can add value back to the farm, back to the community, and give people another alternative, something to do, you know. I don't know of many places in the state that you can go to Longhorn Steakhouse and walk across the street and go to a Upek strawberry patch, and we hope it's something that the community will really enjoy. Along with the strawberry patch, we do continue to plan to use the farm as it has been used for row crops and for hay production, and none of that is going to change there on the farm, and we're looking at new technologies of how to produce our crop production there on the farm, and continuing to make sure that we're good stewards of the land and making sure that things stay in a suitable manner as they should. So with that, I'll just show you with our pictures, and I think that's about all we have as far as pictures go, but I'd be glad to entertain any questions or anything that you have.
Questions for Mr. Witt? Pettis?
Don't necessarily have a question, but I would urge the commissioners to all look at this picture we have here. You know, so many times we have discussed agriculture, or you have heard me discuss agriculture within our, as we discuss zoning, but if you look at this picture right here in Rutherford County, we still have a multimillion-dollar industry called agriculture, and that picture right there shows agriculture among the other industry that we have within this county, and this is another example of the... And this is another example of the two working together. And this is really something to see. I think the two applications we've had tonight are the first applications we've had as far as with the new zoning that we've had for agriculture. And I know we discussed this quite often in all our work sessions as far as zoning was concerned. And to me, it's real exciting to see this come forward at this time, and I hope to have more to recognize agriculture within Rutherford County.
I can tell you that John Allen and I are very proud to stand up and to be the first ones in the county to pay our $500 and go back to agricultural. So we appreciate getting to spend our $500 wisely. Per application.
I do have one, Brandon, I can mean both of y'all, and I'm tickled to see you do it as a farmer. He can rotate, there's not a plan that says the strawberry patch has to be in a certain point. He can rotate it as needed, okay. Just want to make sure you didn't get caught in the bureaucracy.
Good point. Thanks for watching.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Appreciate you. Anyone else wish to speak for or against this rezoning request? See no one coming forward. I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we're open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Subject to all staff comments.
Motion to approve, and a second. Any discussion? Allos in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposition, the motion carries. Thank you. Item 7, staff reports.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You'll see on your agenda, under Staff Reports, other business, that we have a discussion on what we're calling our glitch zoning ordinance amendments. As you know, we started the enforcement of the new ordinance effective the 1st of this year. And as we've been working with the ordinance and working through it, we have noticed that there are a number of things that need to be tweaked, if you will, things that are in there that maybe there was a typo or something to that effect. So we've kind of been keeping tabs of things as we go along, and this is the first of what will probably be a few that you'll see this year. I don't know exactly how many we'll end up seeing, but we, these handle the ones that we've identified to date. I'm not expecting any action on this tonight. We won't have a public hearing on this, as with any ordinance amendment. But since we had a few minutes, I thought I'd just try to run through some, and hit some of the high points. Basically, the way that we set up this memo, we've done it by chapter, and if you have your ordinance with you tonight, some of you do, some of you may not, basically, it's, we've listed by section and page to help you find out where exactly the code is that we're talking about. But again, we're not expecting action on this tonight, so I'll just kind of run through these real quick. Under Chapter 3, which is the Establishment of Districts and Provisions for the Official Zoning Map, you'll notice under there, again, just you'll see in the memo, new text is bolded, anything deleted is struck through, and then we put an explanation under each item that's in italics, just to give you an idea of why we're doing that. You'll see that in the original 302B, the Identification Alteration of the Official Zoning Map, we had the ordinance number 2012. It doesn't really have an ordinance number, per se. So essentially, what we've done, we've just changed that with the Rutherford County zoning ordinance. That's really the only change that we're proposing right there. On the second page, moving into Chapter 4, there was some discussion about the sale of produce or things grown on the same lot and those kind of things. We did change that to allow it on the same zone lot. Produce grown, as well as yard sales. Essentially, there was a little discrepancy, maybe. We wanted to make sure everybody understood that you could still sell items that you grew on your property, you want to make sure that that was out there. Just kind of gives you an idea. We just kind of lumped it in there with the yard sale. Of course, if it's zoned agricultural, that's a whole different ballgame. And also, we added the following sub-points in this district. We added a couple of things, and these are under the accessory uses area. A parent's day out for childcare for pre-teens, less than 12 hours in any week, does not require a licensure by the State of Tennessee, permitted any property approved as a community assembly use. There are a lot of churches that have these kind of uses, but we want to put that in there, as well as private residential homes that provide childcare for four or less children, requires no licensure from the State of Tennessee. We want to make sure that that was included in there as well. Basically, those two items right there, the same for Chapter 5, an office district, except for the private residential homes, which aren't permitted there. Chapter 6, the commercial neighborhoods, CN District, does allow residential uses, so we put both of those back in there for that, as well as the industrial district. Again, a parent's day out where community facility, excuse me, community assembly facilities are permitted. Under Chapter 11, under our supplementary district regulations, and again, this is, without having the ordinance, this may be a little difficult to understand, you'll notice that we've just basically said for this particular item, we're going to rename it to double-frontage lots. And essentially, what we're doing here, after reviewing the current language that we had in a little more detail, was determined that the situation described was unlikely, very unlikely to happen in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. The diagram that was on that page was also confusing, so we just recommended deleting the diagram, as well as replacing the text with the existing text that was in the pre-2013 ordinance. This is how we traditionally have handled it. After looking at it, we feel this is probably the better approach to go through. Under temporary use permits, Section 1101, you'll see that the only change there really was just carrying out the intent of the resolution. It's an ordinance, so we just crossed that resolution and put ordinance in. Again, you'll see most of these are like that. Under Sales of Food and Merchandise, 1101M2, there was a lot of discussion about outdoor displays and sales that could be conducted in commercial and industrial districts. I think the Planning Commission wanted to see that opened up a little more, where it could be seen in all districts, with subject to the Board of Zoning Appeals approving such use. So basically, what the change is that we're proposing is just as a freestanding use in any district, as opposed to commercial industrial district, still limited to six months per year. Parking defined, as defined in the ordinance, traffic circulation's available, and we just put the caveat in there that sales of food or merchandise allowed by right in AR District do not require a temporary use permit. That was an issue that had come up, and that's how we're proposing to address that. Under 1103C, it's just a quick typographical error. It was, the distance measurements and everything are actually in Subpart A as opposed to B, so that was just a quick change there. Under 1103, this particular thing that we're changing here, that kind of goes hand in hand with the chart, Appendix B, which you'll see. Basically, what we found out here is, you know, historically, the county has allowed single-wide mobile homes on lots of five acres or greater by right, anything less than that by conditional use. Under the new ordinance, you know, that was the intent, was to continue that. Again, anything over five acres would still be by right, anything under that would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception. But the chart and the text kind of conflicted a little bit. You could almost read into it that they would not be allowed to do that, based on the chart, that it wouldn't be allowed in the RL or the RM district. So what we did was we clarified the chart, basically changing Appendix B as a dwelling mobile home, less than five acres slash greater or equal to five acres. And you'll see under the RL and the RM, if it's less than five acres, it has to be done by a special exception, and if it's greater than five acres, it's permitted by right. And so we just wanted to revise the text to reflect that as well. Under Performance Standards, 1106A, we just added an "and" in there between commercial activities and community facility activities. Again, that was really more of a typo. Moving on to Chapter 14, under Administration and Enforcement, again, 1404A4, but there was just an extra "the" in there that we got rid of, that, again, typographical error. Under 1404C3, you'll see that we've added a few things to the site plan checklist, essentially property zoning and setbacks, the surrounding zoning of properties surrounding the property under question, and utility certifications. These are items that we typically see on site plans, but were left off inadvertently. We've also amended a couple of them, one of them being proposed ground coverage. We added impervious surfaces. And also, under 1404C3L, location of utilities using best information. We didn't have this statement in there at first, including but not limited to, we didn't want the engineers to think that they only had to put sanitary sewer septic tank. We want to make sure that all utilities were listed, so we placed that in there as well. Part of the biggest change that we're proposing is under the next item, 1404C6, we'd be adding a new section called Site Plan Design Requirements, and I'll have Mr. Corbett kind of explain the reasoning behind that.
As we were reviewing these, we were trying to make these user-friendly or as clear as we could. We had referenced in doing site plans that they are to be designed in accordance with our Rutherford County Stormwater Management Ordinance. In Nashville, we use the Davison County Management Stormwater Manual and TDOT Design manuals. And in the past, what we found is it's difficult at times for an engineer to find these, get all these things together. So what we've put in, listed for the next couple of pages is basically what we're looking for in a site plan design, and these are the items that we check, and we thought, well, if we just outline these, they can go to one spot, and they can, then when the design comes in, it will be in accordance with these items. So it's an attempt to make it user-friendly, if you will. We had referenced this in the Stormwater Manual. The Stormwater Manual, or, uh, Stormwater Ordinance, I mean, basically deals with quality. These items also deal with quantity and stuff, and trying to find a place to put them. And so this is where we think they should be in our ordinance. These are things that we've done now, there's nothing new added here. All we're doing is itemizing the items that we're looking for when they bring to design for us to review.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. And there'll be a chance for questions as soon as we're done. I just have a couple more things to go through. Under, after you go through that, the list, after item BB, following that, Section 1405F, dealing with conflicts of interest. We originally had just Board Member shall abide by the Code of Ethics for Rutherford County as adopted by the County Commission or Board of, Rutherford County Board of Commissioners on April 12, 2007. Rather than keep the date in there, if there were ever any subsequent amendments to it, or if it was ever replaced, we just basically took the date out, so they have to abide by whatever that Code of Ethic is at the time. Under Vacancies and Removal, 1405B, again, this is dealing with Board of Zoning Appeals. We've just made a couple of changes there to make it consistent with state law. Originally, it had on there that the appointment was by the mayor with confirmation by the Board of Commissioners. However, the Board of Commissioners really is what is listed in state law, so we just clarified that, again, to make it consistent with TCA 137106.
Does that mean we're going to change the way these positions are filled?
No.
Because in the past, the mayor's still made a recommendation, and the commission just ratified it, but...
Well, that was with the planning.
They could almost feel like going with the steering and the full commission, all and...
Yeah, the one that you were just talking about was for the Planning Commission, not the Board, as I recall. Was a renewal.
It is the Planning Commission, yeah, but...
But no, this is dealing with Board of Zoning Appeals.
Oh, Board of Zoning.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is dealing with Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. The last couple of amendments deal with, again, more Board of Zoning Appeals actions, dealing with variances, and also special exceptions. Under the previous zoning resolution, there was a nine-month timeframe between if an application was denied, when it could be brought back up for reconsideration by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those kind of situations don't happen too often, but that was the guideline that we used, based on what the regulations stated. For whatever reason, under the new ordinance, we had a timeframe in there for rezoning applications of six months, which I still think is an adequate timeframe, but we didn't translate that over into the Board of Zoning Appeals for one reason or another, I'm not sure why. But noticing that that was lacking, we decided to go ahead and put that in there. Basically, if there's a special exception or variances denied, then they have to wait six months for reconsideration by the Board, unless it's initiated by the Board of Zoning Appeals, or, as you see, number two, when the previous application was denied for a reason that the proposed request would not conform with the land use plan, and the land use plan has subsequently been amended in a manner which would allow the proposed zoning or the proposed use. And that, we put that both in the variance and the special exception section. Again, we kind of talked about the Appendix B, the land use activity table. I've already went over that, so I won't go back to discuss that. The last thing, under the land use index, of course, you can remember that under Appendix C, that's where all the different listed, uses were listed and then categorized. There were a couple that the Board of Zoning Appeals gave their interpretation on at the February 13, 2013 meeting, which is consistent with Section 201 of the ordinance. If there's a use that is in there, we take it to the Board, that's not in the ordinance or other, we take it to the Board of Zoning Appeals for their interpretation. There were two that they've made recommendations on or made interpretations of, C and D landfill, construction and demolition debris landfills. We would classify those as extensive impact facilities and indoor gun ranges. We would classify those as entertainment and amusement services. And you'll recall that when we originally were looking at the draft of the ordinance, we had some discussion about confined animal feeding operations or feedlots. We determined those were agricultural uses and weren't really anything we could regulate necessarily. We thought we'd eliminated everything from the ordinance about that, but we forgot to take that one off, so we just recommend that you remove that. So that's just a quick overview. I know I flew through that. If you have questions or anything, I'll be more than happy to answer those now.
Your consideration study, and it'll be placed on the, I believe it's the April 8.
If that's, if that is the date, then yes, sir, that would be on our next night meeting. We'd put it on that.
6:00 PM, April the 8th, Agenda 4, public hearing.
And obviously, if you have some questions or if you'd like to discuss further, just let me know if there's, you know, some different wording or something in here that you think would work better. We have a little bit of time, so this is just for, we had some extra time with one of the applications being pulled tonight. I thought this would be a good time to bring this up. That's pretty much all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Have anything else?
Wanted to remind everyone that the two zoning requests, April, that'll be Thursday, April 11th at 6:00 PM. And our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 25th. That'll be 9:00 AM meeting over in the Planning Building. And the items that we talked about, as far as the glitch ordinance items, will be scheduled for a public hearing at our next 6:00 PM meeting, which will be April the 8th, right here at 6:00.
And I'll add, as far as the meeting on the 25th, that what we have in the work session, again, with the subdivision regulations, to begin our review of the draft subdivision regulations, we gave, you should have all received an email of the updated draft that we're looking at. You'll probably be getting another email from me with a, basically, a page addendum, if you will, of a couple of other things that have been changed, but not a whole document, but just to let you know that that'll be coming.
Also, there's an envelope. I think Gail has it, or it's being passed around for flower fund, to replenish our flower fund. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, it's St. Baldrick's time again this year, so I'll be getting my head shaved Saturday morning, if good Lord and the creaks don't rise. We've been doing this for a few years. My son got into it a few years ago, he's a guy at church that's doing it, and so I'm raising funds for kid cancer research, and so it's called St. Baldrick's, and there'll be hundreds of people getting their head shaved Friday night and Saturday morning, so I'll be one of those. So if y'all can give a donation, great. If you don't, support somebody else that's doing it, and let's fight cancer. So, thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the two applications today, to go back to agricultural, I guess it's a little concerning to me that these people have to pay $500 to essentially do what they've been doing for years. And perhaps that's a glitch in our system somewhere, but I think that, you know, we should be encouraging family farms and that sort of thing, instead of charging them $500 fees. I mean, is there any possibility of having the commission, I'm not sure this has to go before the commission, but waiving fees for people in this type situation that are going to continue to do what they've been doing for years?
I think that's something that we can discuss. Again, Mayor Burgess and I can kind of discuss that, and kind of see where we go from there.
Back with us on that?
Yes, sir, I can.
Can you get an answer?
I can.
Good point, Jim. Thank you. Questions? Appreciate your participation tonight. We're adjourned.